Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, February 18th Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on the Reverend Jody Moore, Outer Banks Presbyterian. Jody, good to see you again. Thank you for the invocation.
Thank you. Good evening. Let us join together in prayer. Dear God, you are the Creator of us all, and you have given us this good land as our heritage. You made this beautiful place on earth that we call Dare County. We thank you for the resources of this community, for our beautiful beaches, and the wildlife that call the Outer Banks home. You've entrusted us to be good stewards of those gifts. May we take care of the earth that you have entrusted to our care. We're grateful for all the contributions of the citizens of this county who have taken an interest in making this a better place, and for all of the Dare County employees who are so dedicated to their work. We remember this day those who are struggling with life's hardships and who need compassion and real assistance. We thank you for helping agencies in the government, our nonprofit groups, and the churches and other religious bodies who work to take care of the needy. We lift up the primary elections that are held here in North Carolina, that will be on March 3rd, and also those who have already been participating in early voting. We thank you for those who have chosen to run for elected positions, and all those who give their time and energy in an effort to improve the community. Help us to put aside partisanship and rancor and work for our common good. Almighty God, we particularly ask your blessing for those who hold office on this Dare County Board of Commissioners. We thank you for each person who has been elected to serve and give our commissioners a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare of us all. For this specific meeting today, God, we ask for you to guide the deliberations. Be with those who will be speaking in the public comments, and for the work of the Southern Shores Library Committee, the results of the countywide revaluation, the Soil and Water Conservation District Report, and all the other items before the body. Help those who speak to demonstrate civility and respect, and enable those at this meeting today to think not only of what they want to say, but give everyone ears open to listening to one another's perspectives. And may the decisions that are made promote justice, righteousness, and love. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
The leaders of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County man?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. Just a few items. The last couple of weeks have been busy as normal. I want to thank Commissioner Couch for setting up a meeting with myself and county manager to talk about the graveyard of the Atlantic. We had the executive director down and folks from state to talk about some potential opportunities for the graveyard Atlantic and expanding the displays in that area. And I think we made some good progress at that meeting, Commissioner, and I appreciate you setting that up for us to meet. And we'll be talking about that at the board's retreat in March. So, thanks again, Commissioner, for that. For those of you that missed the state of the region, Representative Haney and Senator Steinberg presented that on February 6th. Most of our board members here were present to hear those presentations. A lot of good work going on from both of those gentlemen, from the General Assembly, and we appreciate them taking the time to bring those items to our attention. The arch council, I serve on the local arch council. We had a retreat Saturday, the 8th, to talk about the future and goals and objectives of the arch council. The arch council is very, very active in our community, do a lot of good things, and we're excited to announce that in March, there'll be a groundbreaking for the courtyard project that we have over there. That if you haven't had a chance, go by the arch council, see what those renderings are, that facility out there where the Veterans Memorial, and everything's all going to be redone. It's going to be a really, really nice, attractive courtyard for the arch council. So, stay tuned for that, and that groundbreaking is coming up soon. Also had the pleasure to meet with two of the stakeholders on Rhode Island in Manio, Mr. Malcolm Ferring and Bill Massey recently to talk about COA, what we're doing in Manio with COA, and what this board has approved to date, and take it to the next level. We're talking about some long-term goals and objectives that they shared with me. So, I'd be glad to share with those at a later date as we move on and we build the new facility. A lot of good things happening with respects to COA and where we go with COA down the road in the future. The Commissioner Ross and myself was able to participate last Wednesday at the Baum Center. The College of the Abrahams Foundation presented nine students, the Susan K. Preston Scholarship for 2019 semester, and nine of these ladies signed up to qualify for Nurses Aid and Certification, and they registered with Jim Alliance in dementia class, and all nine of those ladies participated and completed. They got three different certificates, one from the COA Foundation, Jim, and the College of the Abrahams. So, very good program, a lot of hard work went into that, teaching these ladies that are in that profession, working with dementia patients. And that was a great turnout, what Commissioner Ross.
Terrific. And three of those recipients, I know personally, and you may know them as well, as they provide care for my father-in-law at the Spring Arbor Facility. And it was very, very reassuring to see them receive those scholarship awards and continue that dementia-related training. It's such, it is such a need now as that grows in our population.
Absolutely. And we've seen that from our Health and Human Services Department, how that's growing in our community, the age, our population ages growing and dementia's growing. And you're right, I know two of those ladies work with my mother at Spring Arbor. My mother's 93 years old, soon to be 94, and they take very good care of her there. And I was glad to see that training for those ladies that signed up for that. Today, I attended a mayor's luncheon. We do this monthly, and they are in the midst of talking about their budgets and their revow as well. We will share some of that later in our meeting this evening. And just had a good meeting with those mayors. So, I'll report back at a later date on what their goals and objectives are and where they're going with their revow. But we had very, very good conversation with respects to the revow and where they may go, and certainly where the county may go. And we'll certainly have some more conversations about that in our retreat in March. The vice chairman and myself, at the end of this month, will be heading to Washington, DC again to attend the National Association of County Commissioners Conference in DC. And we're looking forward to that. And I think we'll interact with our constituents across the country, and certainly, hopefully, we'll pick up anything we can positive that can help us in Dare County. So, we'll be attending that, the three-day seminar at the end of this month. And then finally, last but not least, following up on our commitment to Hatteras Island, hopefully those folks who are listening tonight, that may participate in the public comment section, we are, I have decided, and the board has agreed, that we will hold our April 20th 5:00 meeting on Hatteras Island. So, it'll give our Hatteras Island constituents an opportunity not to have to come up this way and participate. But we will do another one of those later in the year. And I'm also looking at potentially, in between that time, holding another town hall on Hatteras Island so that we can get feedback from our residents on Hatteras Island. So, we are step-making good on our promise that we made just three or four weeks ago, and we look forward to that. So, that's all I have under chairman's comments, so county manager.
Chairman, item two on the agenda is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening and you have not signed up, raise your hand. When you do, I'll recognize you. Please come to the podium, state your names and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, I have Catherine Fagan.
Thank you. I'm sure that the commissioners recall the sanctuary city resolution that was made and passed a while ago, at the last meeting. And I spoke at that time and mentioned that really, the entire Constitution is important, and that we should not be choosing one amendment over the other. And so, I am proposing a new resolution today that reads, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America is the foundation upon which our nation was created, and whereas all amendments therein describe the innate rights of the people, and whereas the First Amendment in its entirety states Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Whereas the First Amendment is the protector of the civil liberties of the people encompassing the ability to be free in the conduct of their lives and to take part in their government in that it states, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, thus allowing all people to practice a faith of their choosing or no faith at all. And whereas the First Amendment protects our freedom of speech, thus allowing the people to speak freely regarding governmental leaders and to openly criticize and speak for and against said leaders. And whereas the First Amendment protects the freedom of the press as sanctimonious, allowing the dissemination of information to inform the citizenry of the actions of their government. And whereas the First Amendment protects the right of the people to peaceably assemble, protecting the people in their efforts to come together to address political and societal issues without interference. And whereas the First Amendment protects the right of the people to petition the government for a redress of their grievances, thus allowing the people to actively and assertively work with their leaders of the government they want, and that those leaders work for the people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners oppose any and all attempts to infringe upon these rights and freedoms, including freedom to practice a religion of their choosing, free of governmental influence or the establishment of a state religion, or to practice no religion. Freedom of speech, freedom to assemble, freedom of the press, and freedom to seek redress of grievances against the company, the company, the government." And I want to say that I'm doing this with civility and respect. I just feel like all of the amendments are important, and I reference civility and respect as the minister earlier prayed that we conduct this. And when we redress our government, we should do it with civility and respect, and that's what I'm trying to do here. I totally disagree that we have an amendment just acknowledging the Second Amendment. That just isn't good enough. If we're going to acknowledge one, we need to acknowledge all of them. And truly, can you have a democracy, can you have a free country, without freedom of speech, without freedom of religion? And by freedom of religion, I do mean no religion, as well as any religion you want. Doesn't have to be Christian. And that we're able to assemble here. We're able to assemble here and address you. That is paramount to running government. And so, the First Amendment is absolutely critical to the foundation of this country. And I would ask that if we're going to start acknowledging different amendments, that we start with the First Amendment. And I passed, I gave Mr. Outen copies of the proposed resolution, and would ask that you consider it and perhaps put it on the agenda for March 2nd.
Thank you, Mr., thank you for your comments, and thank you for this resolution. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
Is there other public comment this evening? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Why didn't you mention the rest? Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, good evening. How's everyone doing?
Very good, thank you.
Good, good. I just wanted to come in and let you guys know, and everyone here, that if anyone doesn't know by now, we're planning the 2020 OBX Rotting Custom Festival here on the Outer Banks, and it's underway real well. We wanted to get something set up for your next meeting to do official presentation to you guys and ladies. And I just wanted to let you know everything's going well. We've got 364 cars registered as of today. Last year this time, we only had 75. So, we're doing really well, and I just wanted to give you all a heads up what's going on.
How many do you have registered?
364. 364 cars registered this year so far.
You need a bigger site.
May 1st and 2nd. Yep, and we'll come to your next meeting doing official, let you know all of what's going on. I just wanted to come in and just let you all know that we're on point and ready to rock and roll.
Thank you, Michael. It's a great event. It really was attended well last year, and I'm looking forward to it. Be sure to reach out to our clerk, make sure we get you on the agenda.
Yes, I will.
And we look forward to it. That's fantastic.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you every month. Thank you for your time.
I've seen some of the cars you had posted up that were coming, and wow, it's going to be outstanding show.
It's going to be, it's going to be good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good deal. Thank you for doing it.
No problem. Thank you all.
Other public comment this evening? Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Seeing none here, is there any public comment in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
At that, Mr. Chairman, we close public comment, and we move to item three. And this is a presentation about the Southern Shores Library Committee, and I think Villius Morrison is here for that.
Good evening, Ms. Morrison. Well. Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Villius Morrison. I'm a resident of Southern Shores, and I represent the Southern Shores Library Committee, of which there are various members here tonight in support. Let me congratulate you on funding and supporting a superb library system here in Dare County. This is an amazing and valuable resource for Dare County residents of all ages and walks of life. You may recall a MasterCard TV ad where a father buys ballgame tickets, hot dogs, and so on, for his son and himself. That was a cost and a charge. However, the outcome for the father and son getting together, priceless. Dare County funds, taxpayer money spent on library services, enrich the community far beyond the dollars spent. It's value beyond money. However, Dare County population is growing, particularly the northern end of the county. Southern Shores, Duck, Kitty Hawk is almost exploding with year-round residents, people retiring here and moving here to take jobs. And along with the growth in population on the northern end of the county, there is growth in traffic, tremendous traffic, both from locals and from the many visitors who are on our roads. Nowadays, the Kill Devil Hills branch of the library, south of the Wright Memorial, is a big trip from northern Dare, especially in congested traffic from May to October. Kill Devil Hills is a long way to go in dense traffic, and hazardous for children or anyone on bicycles trying to get there. I was told that there would be slides. I don't know if the.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
We're looking at it.
You have the slides. Very good. And then we need to go to slide two.
Okay.
I don't, I was hoping that if I click this, yes, here we are. Well, the many concerned people in Southern Shores got together, went to the town council, and said, "Let's do something." The council convened a public meeting, big crowded attendance, and ended up, they appointed a committee to look into the feasibility of a modestly-sized branch of the Dare County Library to expand service availability in northern Dare County. The committee was not just Southern Shores members, but also people from Duck and Kitty The first thing after the committee met, had a presentation from Jonathan Walk, county librarian, they pursued several paths. The first was, they put together and developed a survey, which to find out the level of interest in the community. The survey was voluntary. It was put on the Southern Shores website, and people from Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk and Duck were invited to participate in the survey. So, it was voluntary participation, and here you see this, thank you, the survey results. There was overwhelming support for having a branch of the library in northern Dare County. Eighty percent of those who responded said, "Yes, we would love to have and we would use a library branch in northern Dare." What the survey also found was, 91% said, "Yes, having a northern branch for essential library services is important." Eighty percent supported it, and 75% said they would use the library more if a branch were located in the northern part of the county. Among the desired services, not simply browsing displays of new books and wonderful subjects and checking out, very important were the adult and children's programs, summer reading, preschool programs, adult enrichment programs. All of these are enjoyed in the other three branches, and these would be welcomed and used on the north beaches. In addition, computer access and even education how to use is an important part of library activities these days. So, support and enthusiasm for a branch is very clear from the survey. So, the next step for the group was to see if any premises would be available. At the north end of the county, there is not a great deal of commercial property, and the cost is quite high. To lease space in any of the big shopping centers around Southern Shores and Kitty Hawk, you're looking at $18 to $20 a square foot, including camp fees. Well, the library researched and went about and found six Juniper Trail in Southern Shores, which I believe you can see on your screen. This building is, adjoins the main Town Bank Library Branch and is owned by Town Bank. Taylor Sugg, the president of Town Bank on the Outer Banks, took us through, and we identified a suitable space in this building for a modestly-sized library, about the same as the Hatteras branch. And after conversations with Town Bank, Taylor Sugg, Town Bank has offered these premises in such a wonderful location for $1 a year. That is, they will lease the premises, about almost 3,000 square feet, to Dare County for use as a branch, as a northern branch of the library, for $1 a year. That represents a tremendous savings. According to our calculation, that's about $40,000 to $50,000 a year. And so, based on that wonderful offer, the committee, thinking positively about the future, explored an annual operating budget. However, first, I should mention that the premises would need some modification. This is because, in conversation with Jonathan Walk, the library has to have open space so that librarians see what is going on. And so, we got an engineer, who many of you may know, Rick House, a respected Dare County engineer, to go through the building, and he has come up with a plan. It's not necessarily the final plan, but it's a working preliminary plan of how the building can be adapted to and become more open in its capability. The cost, the capital cost to adapt the building for library use would be in the region of $150,000 to $175,000. That is the informed opinion of two commercial builders whom we took through with Rick House's plan. So, first of all, we have the offer of space, the possibility of modifying the space at around $150,000, and then we have the possibility of an operating budget of about $150,000 a year. So, what we know is, strong interest has been expressed, as indicated in the survey. The town of Southern Shores has given its official approval to this endeavor. And so, commissioners, again, we have a superb facility in Dare County. We are asking that you extend that to Southern Shores and take the benefit of the generous offer by Town Bank, which helps us to leapfrog into something in the near future. So, today, commissioners, I ask you to establish a Dare County Library Branch in Southern Shores, which would expand library services in Dare County, and to implement this in the 2021 Dare County budget. The committee would be very interested in working with the county in some way to look at ways and means of making this happen. But thank you for your consideration of this wonderful project.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Quite a bit of information. Certainly, it's obvious you folks have done your homework. You've done a great job. You've really found a tremendous location, excellent location. I will, I believe the board will, certainly, we have budget talks coming up in the next 30 days or so, and 60 days. And so, we'll put this on our agenda for our board to discuss.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May we ask Jonathan? Do you have a moment?
Yeah.
We're fortunate to have Jonathan work with us. Hi, Jonathan.
No pressure.
No, no, I'm not going to. No, no, I'm not gonna ask you for a yes or no. I'm just wondering about some-
Good evening.
-usage factors. You were able to send us some percentages that indicated about thirty percent of the library users in Kill Devil Hills today are representative of Duck, Southern Shores, and Kitty Hawk.
Those three communities, correct.
Yeah. Do you know, or do you, and again, if you don't, it's okay. I was just wondering if you had a rough idea of the number of users the thirty percent would represent for the Kill Devil Hills Library user population? I'm, I'm trying to figure out if that's a hundred, or five hundred, or what it might be.
Well, the, the number of registered borrowers from Duck, Southern Shores, and Kitty Hawk, active borrowers, is about eighteen hundred plus.
Eighteen hundred registered, which is terrific. That's great usage. Do we know if they're active?
Well, it means the car's been used in the last two years.
Gotcha, gotcha. I thought I had one more question for you when I saw you there in the audience.
What would the book cost be to-
Well, there'd be, there'd be recurring, like, operating to keep it stocked throughout, but there would be what we call an opening day collection. And just to explain my role, I'm not on this committee officially. I have certainly answered questions that they have, and I also feel I need to point out how rewarding it is to hear from citizens that they value the service that we provide. But there is what's called an opening day collection, and once I was able to get into the space, kind of see what I think it could hold comfortably, look at where we could put shelving, you know, at about seventeen bucks a pop, figure, you know, an opening day collection could easily be in the tens of thousands of dollars. That would be your one-time cost to kind of stock it and open it. And then every year, there'd be something operational for materials.
Some of those figures might be helpful.
That, that operational cost was around-
To go into our budget.
Right.
What I would, what I would suggest is these type of questions, that we formulate those questions so that we can collectively add them, so that we can present them to John, so that he can prepare those when we go into our retreat and have these deep discussions at our retreat.
You're taking the words out of my mouth. I wanted to be sure, Jonathan, that you would, I presume, be the person presenting the financials relative to a budget meeting on this.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you again, Ms. Morrison.
May I add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
That Jonathan and Commissioner Ross had mentioned the book collection and the cost of that, which I didn't reference. We're aware that, that the reason I use the term ways and means, there were, there are other sources besides county funding, and can we just say we're all thinking about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you all for being here.
Jim, that brings us to item four on the agenda, and that's the results of our 2020 countywide eval, and Hosee Wilson are here for that.
Good evening, Greta.
Good evening. Hope everyone is well. See if we have our, there we are. Okay. So, we will be going over the results of the 2020 countywide revaluation tonight. We have been working on this revaluation for over two years, and the culmination, well, it's not quite over yet because we have the, the appeals process, but the valuation process is, and all our other processes are complete now, and we want to go over the results of our analysis of Dare County's market, and our review of forty-three thousand five hundred parcels, one at a time. And also wanted to thank the board for the approval of the tools that we have used in this revaluation, the analysis software that we got a couple of years ago, and also the 3D imagery, which have helped us tremendously in our work to be able to refine, revise our processes and improve them also. So if you have any questions during our presentation, please interrupt or wait till the end, either way. So today, we are going to go over the preliminary 2020 tax base, and it's considered preliminary because until all our appeals processes are complete, the values are preliminary. We'll give you various breakdowns of the property values, property value types, results of our sales ratio studies, information about the notices that will be going out, and information about the appeals process. So what I'm gonna do is have Hosee come up and go over, or I'll move the slides along, and he'll talk.
Good evening, Hosee.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's well. I'm gonna go over a great deal of data. Sometimes we speak in terms that might not be familiar to you, so if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. First slide is, gives you a breakdown of how diverse our taxpayers or property owners are. If you look at the graph, forty-five percent of our property owners are from Dare County, twenty-six percent of the property owners are from Virginia, nine percent are from various other North Carolina counties, and then the remaining twenty percent are from all fifty states, which we did check that the other day, and we still have property owners from all fifty states, and a number of foreign countries. So, that creates a bit of a challenge when you do a reappraisal, because when you're from Nevada, you may not understand how our process works, how often we do these, what our market value standard may be, how our appeals process works. So, it's just, it's a challenge that we face, and in, in this age, we, we strive to be as transparent as possible, because as Greta said, we, we have a, a great deal of, of analytical tools that assist us in doing our job, and, and we feel that we do it very well. So, moving on, the next slide, it's just a breakdown between our taxable properties and our exempt properties. Our taxable parcels from the results of our reappraisal, the assessed value is fifteen point nine billion. Our exempt parcels is, the assessed value is two point eight billion, which represents fifteen percent of our assessed value for this reappraisal. One thing to note, the exempt properties are those that are totally exempt. Those are county-owned properties, estate-owned properties, things like this, religious properties. These are not qualifying exemptions somewhat like the disabled veteran or the homestead. That's not included in these figures. Out of this group, our total parcel count is forty-three thousand four fifty-nine, and five percent of these are exempt. So, the next slide is a comparison. What we did is we compared the, the prior reappraisal in 2013 with our current reappraisal in 2020, to give you an idea of, of what those increases in, well, in thirteen, it was a decrease. The blue columns represent the prior year before the reappraisal, and then the green columns represent the reappraisal year. So, our preliminary 2020 real property tax base, taxable property is fifteen point nine billion. The 2013 revale resulted in a twenty-nine percent decrease in property valuation. The 2020 revaluation has resulted in an overall increase of twenty-six percent in the tax This is probably the slide that everyone is most interested in. This is value change by county, area, and district. And I'll go over the county areas first. The Northern Beach districts are highlighted in blue, Roanoke Island in green, the mainland in kind of a different purple, blue, and Hatteras is purple. So I'm just gonna hit the, the ranges of the overall increases for the countywide area, not each district. The Northern Beach area increased a range of sixteen to thirty-seven percent per district. Roanoke Island increased nineteen to forty-seven percent. Mainland, thirty-seven to fifty-two percent. And just a note, with Roanoke Island and the mainland areas, the parcel counts of these districts are small, so are comparatively speaking. So, the variation makes sense, because one, you don't have the number of parcels, you don't have the number of sales, so it's not quite as consistent as far as Northern Beach is Hatteras Island. I don't know if consistent is the right term, but there is a broader range. We also believe that with our prior reappraisal, because market values were going down, that there was lack of sales in these areas that provided, did not provide enough analysis or, you know, enough data for us to analyze at that time. One way to look at that, and sometimes a misconception that, that property owners have, is they feel that this whole happened in one year. Like, my property value went one way or another, and this happened between nineteen and twenty. It's been seven years since the reappraisal in 2013. Our increase is twenty-six percent, which equates to three point seven percent per year, which, in my opinion, it demonstrates a healthy market. So that, that's something I'd just like to point out, because we get that quite a bit in our office. So, moving on to the next slide, what type of properties make up our tax base? Obviously, the majority is residential. Residential property is eighty-four percent, this is single-family residential, and it is thirteen point three billion. Our commercial is ten percent of our tax base, with, which is one point six billion. Condos are eight hundred and eighteen million, and timeshares, which is six percent of our tax base, and timeshares are ninety-six billion, which is one percent. Boat slips are in there just because we tax those, but it's a very small tenth of a percent or so. So the next slide is a detail of property types, and this is interesting as far as we have average values. The property type residential vacant improved, there's thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine parcels. The total value being thirteen billion three forty-five nine ninety-nine nine, and the average value for these parcels is three hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred. In thirteen, the average value was two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred, which is up thirty-five percent, just five percent a year. Our condos, there's twenty-eight hundred and seventy-nine, total value of eight hundred and eighteen million, with the average value of two hundred and eighty-four two hundred. In 2013, our condos averaged two hundred and forty-six hundred, which is an increase of six, of eighteen percent, excuse me. And the timeshares, there's seven hundred and twenty-three units, a hundred and fifty-six parcels, total value of ninety-six million oh fifty-five one hundred, average value of a hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred. In 2013, timeshare co-ownerships, the average value was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred, so that resulted in a sixteen percent decrease in that property type. Moving on to land types, which is a breakdown, that's what this slide is. Land, of course, plays a major factor, it's a contributing factor for our valuation. Non-influenced property is the green section of that pie, which is five point four billion, which is thirty percent of our value. Non-influenced residential property is not waterfront or close enough to the ocean for its value to be affected. We consider that ocean-influenced property. Ocean influence includes any properties' values that are affected proximity to the ocean. We actually step back, you know, rose from the ocean, and that's how those are determined. And that's twenty-one percent of our parcels are ocean-influenced. That's three point eight billion. Our oceanfront parcels are eighteen percent of our value, and that is eight percent of our parcels. And the value is two point nine billion. Sound canal influence properties are two point six billion, that's seventeen percent of our value, and that's sixteen percent of our parcels. Commercial is one point one billion, and that's seven percent of our value and four percent of our parcels. In comparing this slide with those percentages in thirteen, they're very similar. They haven't changed an awful lot, as far as those percentages of the, of the base. So next slide, detail of land types. We have parcel counts. We have the nineteen value, the twenty-twenty value, the average value of these, and the percent change. The non-influenced parcels, the twenty-nineteen value is four billion, slightly over four billion. The twenty-twenty value is five billion three ninety-five oh fifty-two seven hundred, with an average value of two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred. That's a thirty-three percent change. The ocean influence, there's eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-five parcels, twenty-nineteen value, three billion one thirty-six oh four oh one hundred. Twenty-twenty value, three billion eight hundred and ten million one ninety-six five hundred, the average value of forty, four hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred percent change, twenty-one percent, excuse me. Oceanfront parcels, thirty-one forty-four, twenty-nineteen value, two billion two eighty-three one eighty-one eight hundred. Twenty-twenty value, two billion nine nineteen five fifty-eight two hundred, with an average value of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred, twenty-eight percent change. Sound canals, six thousand five hundred and fifty-one parcels, twenty-nineteen value, two billion one seventy-one nine fourteen eight hundred. Twenty-twenty value, two billion six forty-two one twelve four hundred, with an average value of four hundred and three thousand three hundred, twenty-two percent change. In the commercial parcels, there's seventeen sixty-seven, twenty-nineteen value, nine hundred and twenty-six million oh thirty-nine three sixty. Twenty-twenty, one billion one forty-eight three twenty-nine, with an average value of six forty-nine nine hundred percent change, twenty-four percent. So you see the base with forty-one three forty-three, with the twenty-nineteen value of twelve billion five eighty-seven two thirty-two sixty, and the twenty-twenty value of fifteen billion nine fifteen two forty-eight eight hundred, with an average value of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, that resulted in a twenty-six percent increase. So this next slide is the breakdown by property use. Residential improved is thirteen point four billion, which is eighty-four percent of the value. The commercial improved one point five billion, and that's ten percent of the value. The vacant parcels are seven hundred and twenty million, and that's four percent of the values. In 2013, the vacant parcel- Um, in twenty thirteen, the vacant parcels were six and a half percent. Um, so we're actually obviously running out of raw land. Uh, the residential improved does include condominiums. Okay, this is our statistical analysis, um, which gives you an idea of what kind of job we've done, um, analyzing the market. Uh, what we do is we want, run ratio studies on all property types, on all areas, on all different property, um, uses, um, things of this nature. So what, what a ratio study does is we basically, um, compare our assessed value with what that property's selling for. And, um, it, it allows us to see how, how close we are to where we need to be because we're supposed to, um, revalue property at a hundred percent of market value on that revaluation day. We use median ratios, which is the middle ratio and a range from lowest to highest. Um, we do show average sales ratios and in most cases, they're very close, but one thing with averages is they, uh, there's outliers have a stronger bearing on those. So in our field, um, we use median. It just seems to be, um, less prone to that influence. Um, so, um, we only consider arms-length transactions, um, by statute. And so, and we also used January one, twenty sixteen on up to twelve thirty-one, twenty nineteen. So we have four years of sales. So this first, the data in this first slide is, um, all residential property types and classes. The sales range is twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen and the number of sales is four thousand nine hundred and fourteen. Um, the average sale price is three hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred. The average sale ratio is ninety-nine point six. The median sale ratio is ninety-nine point six. Um, coefficient of dispersion is three point three eight and the price-related differential or PRD is a hundred point four.
Uh, who's he, could we, pardon? Take just to pause a moment on this slide?
Sure.
As I looked at it versus the earlier slide?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure I'm misunderstanding. The average assessed to sale ratio is basically a hundred percent.
Yes.
I read that to mean that our assessed value on the home or the property that's sold was essentially very close to its sale price.
After we adjust it to the market as of January one.
That's the new assessed price.
That's correct.
That's the twenty-six percent increased sale price?
Correct.
Or assessed price, not assessed.
Correct, yeah. That's right.
Ah.
Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. Okay, of these parcels, four, there are fourteen of the, of fourteen percent of these total residential properties sold, fourteen percent of our residential properties sold in this period of time. So it's quite a great deal of sales information. Um, so actually Commissioner Ross said, is that's what, what my next statement says, ninety-nine point six median means our assessed values are slightly less than the sales price. Now that's after every, all the work we've done with our new values. That is the final.
So you missed it by four tenths of a percent.
Yes, sir. We did. Now that's residential property, you know.
This is a powerful confirmation of your, uh, assessment value.
Well, um, just to, I'm gonna briefly touch on coefficient of dispersion, COD, and price-related differential. Basically, the COD is how far the ratios are from the median ratio. So the lower that is, the better, the more uniform you are. So, and the market standard, or industry standard, rather, is less than fifteen percent for residential and less than twenty for commercial. So we're at three point, three point three eight. So we're, we're well within tolerance. Um, so, and the price-related differential, PRD, it tells you whether your higher or lower value properties are under assessed. So, um, it's, it's difficult to explain. The industry standard is between ninety-eight and a hundred and three. So, um, as you can see, our PRD on the residential is a hundred point four. Um, so I'm not gonna go into progressivity or regressivity, but basically it says, okay, are your higher value properties under assessed? That's regressive, which is above one oh three. And progressive is below ninety-eight. Your under-valued properties are under assessed. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Yes, sir.
Is some of that relative to what a buyer is willing to pay? I mean, there's a lot of times when a, a buyer will, they buy with their heart. So if there's a property, for the sake of easy math, that's, uh, a hundred thousand, basically assessed to sale, uh, but they won't, the, uh, price point on it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a deal was struck at a hundred and eighteen thousand. Is this what we're talking about?
In a sense, yes. I mean, I think that can be a contributing factor. That's not everything.
Right.
But that can, that can sway the other way, too. Um, so yes, I mean, it, it can contribute to that. Um, you know, I mean, it's our job to analyze, I mean, are these arms-length? That's what we have to determine. I mean, we have a one, we have a one-person department that does that. I mean, that's, that's what her job is. She's here tonight, so she.
Well, it's data. I realize we're looking at, th- these are numbers.
Yes.
And, uh, that's, one of the beauties of a one percent land transfer tax is how much, uh, information we glean from that. I mean, nothing gets through the cracks.
Nothing, no. Um, we're very fortunate of how well that works. Um, and I think that's a good market indicator when you get reports. I'm sure you get the same reports I do, the land transfer collections report. I mean, when I first got here, I didn't pay attention to it that much. Now I do. Um, it's important. It shows, you know, the, the health of your market. So, but yes, and that was a question we got during the Realtors meeting. Um, you know, don't y'all get all this information? In most cases, yes. Um, sometimes not with, if, if there's no contract with a affidavit, we may not get enough information. But I mean, I think our sales qualification is, is good as anywhere in the state.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, the next slide is just the single-family residential and condominiums. Um, the same, um, sales ratio information, the same group of sales, the same sale date range. Um, the number of sales on the single-family are three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine with an average sale price of four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred. Average assessed, um, sale ratio is ninety-nine point three. Um, median assessed sales ratio is ninety-nine point six. Our coefficient of dispersion on single-family homes is two point six six and our PRD, price-related differential, is a hundred point two. Um, that represents fourteen percent of our single-family residential parcels sold in that period of time. There's twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen. Condominiums, um, seven hundred and sixty-six sales. Average sale price is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, average assessed to sale ratio, ninety-nine point nine. Median sales ratio, ninety-nine point nine. COD, four point six four. Um, PRD is a hundred point five. Um, this is our last, um, statistical analysis, which is commercial and boat slips. We ought, we consider boat slips as commercial as well. Um, same sale range. Notice the number of sales in the commercial, a hundred and eight. Um, average sale price is a million, oh, sixty-nine, nine hundred. In the prior eval, it was, and this isn't exact, but it was over, it was like four hundred and forty thousand. Um, so our average sale ratio is ninety-seven and a half percent. Um, median sales ratio, ninety-seven point nine percent. COD is six point four two percent and our PRD is a hundred and fifteen point six. That'll probably raise a question that is outside of the range. Uh, but those, we don't stratify those property types. Duplexes are considered commercial. There are small mom-and-pop commercial operations and then there's very large, um, malls and such that sell. So the consistency in that property type, in my opinion, is the reason for the PRD being that high. Um, but, you know, that, it is what it is. I, I, I really don't, if I could stratify that group of sales better, I think it would be much lower, uh, but with that number of sales, I couldn't do that. Um, so, um, that's, you know, I'm happy with the COD at six point four two. Uh, our boat slips, um, number of sales is fifty-eight. Average sale price, fifty-four thousand, four hundred. Um, average assessed sale ratio is one point oh two. Median sale ratio is ninety-six point six. Uh, COD is eleven point nine eight and the PRD is ninety-nine point two. Prior reappraisal, we didn't have as many sales. We had, and, um, we, eh, eh, with boat slips, there are different areas, obviously different bet, marinas and basins. Um, they carry very different rates. Um, so that, that's similar to the commercial in a sense, um, but, I mean, we have four hundred and fifteen boat slip parcels and there's fourteen percent of them sold. So we did have enough data. Um, this average sale price actually went down from seventy, seventy-some thousand down to fifty. So we have better data this time, um, so I feel good about that. Um, so moves on from that slide. This next slide is the twenty-twenty assessed values, percent of change from the nineteen values. So it just shows you what grouping ha, and how much these went up or, or didn't go up. I mean, there's not that many that didn't go up, but, um, you see the overall ta, tax base increase is twenty-six percent. Um, roughly half, um, went up from zero percent to thirty percent. And then another thirty percent had an increase between thirty and fifty. Um, sixteen percent increase, more than fifty percent. And this group of properties, um, there is, includes, um, new construction values. So I had a vacant lot in nineteen, but I got a brand-new house in twenty-twenty. So, I mean, that makes sense, 'cause we look at these, 'cause when we first see them, we go, you know, what's going on here? But, I mean, obviously, we have quite a bit of, um, new construction, um, addition improvements, things of this nature that cause, um, large increases in property value. Um, one thing I wanna point out, like, well, five percent of properties, um, decreased. Um, and an important thing to, to think about, because, I mean, you hear me saying increase, increase, and you see the data like I do. Um, all statistics and percentage changes by different types, the way we're looking at this data doesn't necessarily indicate what an individual parcel may experience. Um, you know, because we, uh, as we were speaking, s- some of us before the meeting, you know, we look at every parcel. We've reviewed every parcel. We've had our eyes on every parcel. So, I mean, our data characteristics, if we have those correct, then, you know, the end result should mirror the sales in this period. So, something I want everybody to be, to understand. Um, so this slide is overall percentage change in value, single-family residential by area and land type. So the green column is non-influence areas like I talked about before. And as you, the grouping is the Northern Beaches, Hatteras Island, Roanoke Island and the mainland. Um, so the non-influence land types increased in all areas from thirty-one to forty-five percent overall. The purple columns are the oceanfront land types, obviously only in the Northern Beaches and Hatteras Island. And these land types, single-family residential, increased twenty-seven to twenty-nine percent. The sound canal land types increased, that's the orange column, in all four districts, or all four areas, rather, um, twenty-one to thirty-eight percent. And the ocean influence parcels increased, those are the blue columns, in Northern Beaches and Hatteras Island, twenty-one to twenty-two percent. Um, so statistically, we, we have to do these, so, you know, why do we do them? We do it to reestablish equity among like properties in our tax base, um, to even the playing field among similar properties, uh, based on that sales activity. We revalue properties at their current market value based on their individual characteristics in accordance with adopted schedules, the sched, the adopted schedule of values, standards and rules. Um, I mean, you, you're very familiar with that document, document as am I. Everything we value is based on the contents of that manual. Um, and because of this, all these different factors, percent of change on each property, which goes back to what I was saying earlier, can vary. Um, you know, houses are different, their values are gonna be different. If they're in different areas, they're gonna be different. I mean, we all understand that. Um, so after the analysis, um, I'm gonna talk about our notice. Uh, we're get, we intend to mail notices as planned a week from today, uh, which is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Um, this, what you see in this slide is just the standard window, number-two window envelope. That's how it's gonna come. That's what it's gonna look like. Um, above the return address is the twenty-twenty notice of assessed value. I mean, we hope, you know, people pay attention to that. Uh, obviously, it's an important, important piece of mail that everyone will be getting, any property owner will be receiving, uh, sometime after February twenty-fifth. Um, the next slide is what our notice looks like. Obviously, it includes the, the new assessed value. Um, there's, you know, the property characteristics, the owner, um, not characteristics, but the neighborhood, the address, things like this, the district. Um, and then the lower two-thirds of the form is basically an appeal form that outlines appeal procedures. Yes, sir.
What percentage appeals response do you anticipate when these go out?
Ten.
Just curious.
Yes, sir. Um, so.
It's actually been lowered than that in the past.
If you, um, so it's very detailed and you probably can't see very well, but it, it talks about reasons you can appeal and reasons you can't appeal. Um, that doesn't necessarily keep people from appealing, but, um, nevertheless, uh, you know.
I'll bet you a cup of coffee, it's more than ten this time.
Well, it might be, I don't know.
I like mine black.
Everybody has a right to appeal. I mean, I kid Greta, I'm like, I'm feeling, you know. So, um, but it's very detailed instructions on how to appeal and what you need to have to appeal. So, but it's very detailed instructions on how to appeal and what you need to have to appeal. So, I mean, there's three avenues of appeal. You can appeal by mail. You know, basically, you detach this form, which it's detachable, and you submit it, you fill it out, and you submit it with the information that we request, whether, you know, whatever data you can provide to us that indicates that our assessed value is not market value. So with, this is new this year, which may be an increase, you know, may result in an increase of appeals, but we felt like it was important because of, the first slide I talked about, of where our property owners are located. They're located all over. So we have created an online appeal avenue with the help of our I T department where this form can be filled out online and submitted to us electronically. And, you know, documents attached, it's basically the same form. So, you know, it may result in more appeals because that avenue is available, but we felt like it was important in this day and time to have that option. And it may not, it'd be interesting to see. So, or you can appeal in person, which means, and, and we would like to stress that's by scheduled appointment, because we can't defend a value if we don't know what value's coming in. You know, I mean, I haven't, you know, we're always an open-door office, but under the circumstances, you know, we may already, we probably will have appeals scheduled when people want to come in and talk about appealing their thirty parcels or fifty parcels or what have you. So that's why we have to do this by appointment. So the notice says, they have twenty-one days from the notice date to appeal. March seventeenth is twenty-one days from that notice. So, and, and this is, we will review all appeals, and we'll respond by mail to all appeals within eight weeks. But we won't respond to any appeals until we've reviewed all the appeals, because there may be issues in neighborhoods that gives us an idea to say, wait a minute, maybe we're, if we have thirty appeals in one neighborhood, then, then we need to take a look at that neighborhood and say, hey, what did we miss here, you know, is something going on? So that way, we can accumulate our data, review it, and make decisions based on all of these as a whole. Now, there'll be plenty that are individually, you know, but that's our reasoning behind that. You know, I mean, people are of a nature where they want it done now, now, now. But we, we can't do that, because we may, you know, we have to review what we've done. So that is, that's the notice. And this is our webpage, which is one of my last slides, I know everybody's happy. So we have our own webpage for the twenty-twenty revaluation. It's not on here now, because we can't have them live until after the notices go out. But there will be links, one link being a comparable sales search, which is one of the programs that we instituted with y'all's help that will allow property owners to put their parcel address in, and it populates a map with comparable sales, and they can pick the sales. And they can look for themselves to say, you know, because there's a lot of people that don't really know what their property's worth. So we think this tool will enable them to, one, help them appeal, and also maybe help them understand the market if they're not as, as astute to it as, as some others may be.
Hey, Jose.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt, it does, one of our goals is to reestablish equity in like properties. So if you've got this option to see what your neighbors are, where your assessment is in comparison, that, that shows that we, we're just trying to be equitable across the board.
Yes, sir. And that, that was our purpose, is transparency, is to say, these are the sales that we have. I mean, you're welcome, you know, you're welcome to look at them and see if there's some that may be more comparable to your property that maybe we didn't use. But, I mean, that tool will be available for, now, it's for single-family residential properties and condominiums. Obviously, commercial is, you know, we don't have enough sales to, to do, you know, to work it, for it to work for commercial. We're work, we're not sure about vacant land at this point. But single-family residences, condos, it will be available for that, so. And also, the online, we'll have another link for the online appeal form. But it'll be on the other side of the comparable sales, so we would hope that people would take advantage of the use of that system to say, hey, you know, what sales are out there for properties like mine? So that is, we're, we're very excited about that tool. We, we have a similar tool that we use. It's a, a service through our, our vendor specialist, and we're very thrilled with those. They really, they really help us do a really good job, I think. So steps in the notice and appeals process, this is from our, this slide's from our scheduled values. So I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of how these work. We hear informal appeals after notices go out. And they're not statutorily defined, but until the Board of Equalization and Review begins to meet, when they convene, and they have to convene between the first Monday in April and the first Monday in May, the assessor's office has the authority to change values. So if your property characteristics are wrong, we have the number of baths wrong, the square footage wrong, we are able to change that to reflect accurate data. So we hear informal appeals. We schedule and appeal them, we'll begin that next week, probably the first week in March. And, and this informal appeals process will run until that Board of Equalization and Review convenes. We anticipate their, their first meeting to be on May fourth, which would be the, either be May first or May fourth, depending on the volume of appeals we get. So it gives us some time to see, you know, what we have coming in, and, you know, how much they will have to meet. So, and, and also it gives us time to, to respond to the appeals that we hear in the informal appeal period. So the Board of Equalization Review, they convene, let's, let's, you know, between the first Monday in April and first Monday in May. These dates and times are published in the Coastland Times, they're available on our website. You don't have to appeal informally to be able to appeal, to file an appeal at the Board of Equalization Review. So you don't, you know, you don't have to fill out the form, you don't have to do anything. I mean, you can show up at the Board of Equalization Review and appeal. We, we would request that you do informally appeal, because, you know, if we can avoid incorrect data characteristics going before, you know, certain appeals have to go to the Board of Equalization Review, because we don't see eye to eye with everybody, as you can imagine. But nevertheless, that's how that works. The Board of Equalization Review can, you know, we, they will meet as long as they need to to hear all appeals filed. In a reval, revaluation year, that can be up until the end of December. We don't anticipate it to last that long, but they can hear them that long. And when they adjourn, at that point, once that board adjourns for that tax year, there are no changes to the assessed values for the twenty-twenty year. So those values are set. Otherwise, you would have a, an open door with your tax base, revolving door, rather. So the next level, an appeal that's heard at the Board of Equalization Review, if, if the property owner does not agree with their decision, they can appeal to the Property Tax Commission. And, but they have to appeal at the Board of Equalization Review to be heard at that level. So I'm not going to go, we don't, you know, we don't have a great deal go there, but, I mean, we always have a few. So that, I believe, is my last slide. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Jose.
Yes, sir.
Any questions in the board? Very detailed, thank you. I know that's a long time, lot, lot of work went into that. And can't thank Greta, your staff, for all the hard work that y'all have done in taking care of this reval. That's a big, big, big project every, every eight years.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greta.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda. This is a report from the Dare Soil and Water Conservation District. Anne Daisy's here for that presentation. I see she has some other members of her board as well. I don't know if they're going to participate, but they do bring them forward too.
I have something or two to say.
Good evening, Anne. How are you?
Good evening, thanks for having me. And no offense to Jose, that was very important information, but I'm going to keep it a little bit lighter. I haven't done that much math since college. So we waited, the district waited till this time to be able to present you some information from the work we've been doing for twenty-nineteen and plus. We usually get our cost share funds allocated towards the end of the year, and so we wanted to have those projects finalized before I could present to you this evening. So I'll start off with those cost share programs that the district administers. Again, this is through the Division of Soil and Water Conservation, another Department ag, has three cost share programs that the districts carry out. Ultimately, all of these cost share programs are to help with water quality, soil erosion, soil health. Two of the cost share programs deal with agriculture and water quality practices. And the other program, the Community Conservation Assistance Program, is to deal with stormwater retrofits to help ultimately with stormwater runoff pollutants and water quality. So for that C cap program, as we call for short, Community Conservation Assistance Program, that, these programs are yearly, so we submit applicants from landowners here in Dare County for these programs every year. We, projects that were funded for this last year's cycle were for a total of five thousand dollars to assist the town of Duck implementing a stormwater rain garden, a Collington Harbor resident to install a rain garden, as well as a Kill Devil Hills resident to install rain gardens. And just in case you're not that familiar with rain gardens, these are great tools to help with stormwater runoff. You can kind of think of it as an inverted planting bed. So it's a bowl that will hold that stormwater that's either maybe coming off your roof or your driveway instead of letting that rainwater go down the storm drain, eventually making it out, an outfall into our sounds and ocean. And they're planted with nice native plants that can do well in wet environments and dry. I can go on ad nauseam on that, but I'll cut it right there. And for two of the agriculture programs, the Ag Cost Share Program helps producers put conservation practices in their farming production, one of which is this farmer in Eastlake received thirty thousand dollars for land smoothing, which is to kind of make for a more level field and to dome them off correctly so they're not getting too many ponding areas or too much runoff that then carries the important topsoil away, which is where a lot of soil health nutrients are located. In addition, they received funding for planting of cover crops, which means when, usually they're cash crops are what, are what is planted in summer. This individual farmer does soybean, wheat, and corn usually. And after he's harvested in the fall, instead of keeping his fields bare with no growth, they'll go back in the off, in the winter season and plant a specific species that will grow to keep that soil in place, prevent erosion, prevent wind erosion, water carrying that soil away, and it will also bring nutrients back to that soil, which helps instead of applying fertilizers which are detrimental to runoff and then can therefore cause water quality problems. So those are practices that agriculture producers often use. For the third cost share program, which is the Ag Water Resource Assistance Program, a producer here on Roanoke Island who's doing organic farming received seventy-five hundred dollars of assistance to install a well pump and a microirrigation system. And the importance of helping agriculture producers is to not have them tax our clean drinking in city, town and city water system. So whereas we need that clean water that's been treated for us to drink and cook with, they don't necessarily need to be watering that crops with that, and so it's better to take them off of our, of public water supply and put them in wells and to better manage their distribution with that well water by installing microirrigation, which is a water conservation measure, because ag practices do take a lot of water for production. So those were the three cost share programs. The Ag Rap, which was the water quality, was the first time this, the district has ever received funding to help a producer for that program. So that, to me, was a big deal.
Anne, Anne, excuse me, just a question on that. Did we have cost share programs last year as well?
Yes. Last year, the same Eastlake producer received funding for the Ag Cost Share, and then we also, my memory is not always that great. Maybe the board can help me with the projects we did for C cap was a riparian buffer on a canal shoreline for a private property owner and permeable pavement conversion for the town of Kitty Hawk.
In terms of, this was about forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So last year, was it about the same or, or less?
It was a little bit more, or it was about the same, actually, because the maximum we can receive per year for the C cap program is twenty thousand. That's just because that program for the state's not funded as, as well as the Ag programs are. But the addition of the Ag Rap program kind of brought us to about the same level as, as previous years. And then lastly, the Division of Soil and Water Conservation, who is a, a partner that administrates these, these cost share programs, on behalf of the Soil and Water Districts, applied for an eco, environmental enhancement grant and allowed districts to submit applications for potential projects. Dare District submitted a request for eighty-five thousand dollars for the town of Manio Town Commons to install permeable pavement in that new town, town commons project to reduce stormwater runoff and allow, allow for infiltration, because we all know that there are some flooding issues downtown Manio on occasion. And in addition, the district applied to get thirty-five thousand dollars assistance for the town of Nags Head to install grass swales on Soundside Road, which has also experienced a lot of flooding and stormwater runoff issues. So this map shows all of the projects that have been implemented in Dare County through these cost share programs. And over the years, I keep adding back to that list. We need to get a little bit more in the Southern Beaches, so we're going to encourage that program down there a little bit more. But I know it's not the greatest map, but every year I add a little dot on there for all these conservation practices that are being implemented to help with water quality in the district. Stream debris removal, as you all may be familiar, that the division also works with state legislation to get funding for disaster recovery, not only with agriculture production, but snagging and clearing are also known as stream debris removal, clearing vegetation that has may, fallen in from hurricanes and storms that impedes the flow of water. Still spending Hurricane Matthew funding from the original allocation, which is, which was just over two hundred thousand dollars. The next project that we'll be working towards doing is Back Canal in Stumping Point, which you can see an image of that entire highlighted canal there. And then the remaining work for the Hurricane Matthew funds will be doing certain canals and ditches in the Southern Beaches, would be the last. And they allocated additional funds recently for Hurricane Dorian and And they allocated additional funds recently for Hurricane Dorian and Michael. I applied for an additional $30,000 to redo the canals and ditches in Eastlake on Highway 64, which is a popular spot for all of the trees and limbs and vegetation to fall back in, so, in hopes to get more money to redo that area as well. Side stream debris, last year, we continued with treating alligator weed and aquatic invasive. That's actually in quite a few of our canals and ditches all over Dare County. This is a cost share program that we cost share 50% with the state's Division of Water Resources Aquatic Weed Control Program, and so 2019 was the third year that we've been spraying in Eastlake. We've seen some improvement. It's definitely not as thick as it was when we started three years ago.
Your stats say it's cut in half.
Yes. So something that I've spoken with county manager with and the board is maybe broadening our treatment of alligator weed and other aquatic invasives throughout Dare to make sure to pay, because once it's found its way into our ditches, that plant will break apart, and as water flows, when there's heavy rain, rain events or flooding, that carries that little piece of that plant, and it spreads by, any piece of that plant, it can take root anywhere. And it's dead in the winter, so it doesn't really cause a problem, but then it resurges when the warm temperatures come about. And I think the town of Nagshead saw some challenges during some of the hurricanes where some of their culverts in their drainage ditches were blocked from, from that. So it's, it's a good preventative measure to continue treatment of that, to keep, keep those ditches from being clogged for that. Throughout the year, I tried to find time to squeeze in some outreach to the community. During the fall semester, this is the second or third year, I believe, third year that the district has partnered with Coastal Studies Institute, Albemarle Ecological Fields Site Program, where they have students come for a semester here on the Outer Banks and study here from, from UNC, and then they also are placed into internships throughout the community. I had the pleasure of working with a UNC student named Avery Marea, and she helped implement a lot of outreach and education opportunities that semester that she was here last fall, some of which included doing an outreach table at the Secatean Farmer's Market in Wanties. She hosted some after-school lessons with the 4H program at Cooperative Extension on stormwater and importance of wetlands. Annually, the district participates in the Earth Fair OBX, celebrating Earth Day on the Outer Banks, and that has been held at Dowdy Park the last two years. And this second time I've participated, we did some native plantings there at the park and discussed importance that trees and native vegetation plays in managing our stormwater. Of course, annually, we still continue implementing the fifth grade annual bookmark contest with the Dare County Schools, where students have an opportunity to learn about some soil and water conservation topic and have an opportunity to express what they've learned in a drawing. Those drawings are then turned to bookmarks, which are presented throughout the community and the schools, and they receive prizes. We're carrying out, the 14th year will be 2020. We work with local high school students during Spark Day at Manio High School, where they had an opportunity to get a taste of what it would be like to work in the field of conservation behind them there. And that, oops, that picture is a rain garden that was installed through the Community Conservation Assistance Program that catches stormwater from the roofs at Manio High School, preventing it, stopping it from going down the storm drain there in the parking lot, which leads directly to Doze Creek, which Doze Creek flows into Shallow Bag Bay, where that ultimately helps with improving water quality. And then also getting to work with college volunteers on doing rain garden cleanup events as well. The last couple of months, the district and board have been working diligently on creating a new mission statement that was adopted, as well as looking at a five-year strategic plan on the work that the district will carry out or hopes to carry out here in the next five years. They, I will read our updated adopted mission statement. That was adopted in October of last year. The district's mission is "To be a leader in the conservation of Dare County's soil and water. We collaborate, educate, fund, and provide technical assistance to protect these resources from degradation and to enhance our wetlands, habitats, fisheries, farmlands, and private properties." That being our guiding mission statement, the board has worked diligently on creating a strategic plan for the next five years. They will be adopting that at an upcoming board meeting, and it will be displayed on the Soil and Water webpage for your review, or if you'd like me to email you a copy, I'd be glad to do that. But just to highlight some of the five-year plan goals and objectives that the board has addressed is looking at the district or Dare County's priority resource concerns. Help provide leadership for the conservation and stewardship of Dare's natural resources and the beneficial ecosystem services that these resources provide. Priorities will include looking at our wetland and estuarine marsh impaired waters, estuarine shoreline erosion, and also looking at open space. The board looks to collaborate with county, local, state, and federal partners to tackle current and emerging conservation issues, continue to educate, to inform county citizens and property owners about local conservation concerns and best practices to be able to address those. At funding, funding conservation practices through the Soil and Water Cost Share Programs and looking for additional grant opportunities to move forward the strategic plan. By providing guidance and technical assistance to the public on the implementation of best practices for our natural resource management, and then fostering the growth of the program for soil and water and all the important benefits that it plays to our community and residents and visitors that live here. So if, does anyone have any questions before I?
Any questions, Dan?
I noticed something here that says, "Seek Dare Board of Commissioners' support to move the soil and water to the Cooperative Extension building." Enlighten us.
Typically, um...
I saw that too, Dan.
Let's go around the manager.
Yes. One long-term or short-term goal, however you would like to look at, typically Soil and Water District offices function in a way similar to Cooperative Extension, where it's a partnership. Cooperative Extension is a partnership with NC State and the county, and Soil and Water Districts are a partnership with the county and the Division of Soil and Water. Typically, when you go to any district, and all districts are different, because we don't have mountains like the western part of the state, we don't have clay, thank goodness, and we don't have as many agriculture productions as other ones, and we're the coast, so we're different as well. But typically, Soil and Water District offices are housed either with the National Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is part of the USDA. So for example, Tyrrell County Soil and Water can be found at the FSA office where NRCS is hosted, because we collaborate with the NRCS side of things, and we have our team leaders, and I can go on and bore you with that networking. And then, other times, Soil and Water Districts can be, offices can be located with Cooperative Extension, because a lot of time their work coincides together where they can partner with projects, and it usually is the best fit for some of the work that Soil and Water does for the district.
Kind of fits with your mantra of alone, we can do so little, together, we can do so much.
Yes.
Everybody there together.
And continuing to work with the Planning Department on the stormwater and flooding issues that the county faces, of course. I think that cross-collaboration is a necessary in moving forward and making progress and those kinds of things.
Certainly raising your profile.
Well, no, it's like, it's good or bad, right?
Good, no, that's good.
I'm not much one for attention, but, and I did want to introduce the board members that are here this evening with us. The District Board of Supervisors is made up of five members. Three are elected, and two are appointed by the state Soil and Water Conservation Commission. I mean, it's a nonpartisan board. I just kind of gave you our mission statement and what we work towards to do. Board Chair Ricky Shepherd is an elected official. I think she also wanted to have, say a few words. Sitting next to her is Paul Wright, who is also an elected official. Behind Ricky and Paul is, to your right, did I say that right? Yeah, Erin Fleckenstein, who is an appointed board member, and next to her is Laura Eddy, who is also an appointed member, and Matt Paulson is not here with us this evening. He is the third elected official. So, and now I think Ricky would like to say something briefly, if you wanted to do that.
Well, Anne just introduced me. I'm Ricky Shepherd, and Chair of this board, and happy to have the opportunity to speak to you all. I've been on the board since 2015, and during that time, I've gotten to know and very much appreciate our county's community conservationist, Anne Daisy. With her guidance and enthusiasm, we have brought the Soil and Water District to a new level of involvement and cooperation with state community programs that have brought hundreds of thousands of dollars to Dare County and to our neighbors. On behalf of the board, I would like to request these achievements be augmented with expanding the staff so that we may attain the goals set out in our five-year plan. Soil and water issues are ever increasingly on all of our minds. This is one path to help us deal with future concerns. At this time, I would like to thank Anne and give her our best, as she will be leaving her position to further her pursuit of educating our community on issues of importance. I cannot say enough about how much we will miss her and how hard it will be to fill her shoes. So at this time, I just want to say, thank you, Anne. Thank you very much. And thank you all.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for putting up with us at the Organ inlet Task Force, too.
Most definitely.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the, I'm sorry, item six on the agenda. This is a, a little bit of an unusual situation.
Yeah.
The E-911 Century Link Contract is a contract that we signed when we completed the construction of the EOC and the E-911 facility down there. They were supposed to be billing us, I think it's something around $17,000 a month for the telephone service for that whole complex there, and, and I think that's, was to begin after the first year. After the first year, we didn't get a bill, and so we made inquiry as to where's our bill? Well, we don't know, we'll check on it, make another inquiry, where's our bill? Well, you don't owe us anything, you're paid in full, everything's covered, and we went about this for a while. Well, apparently whoever was in charge of that moved on, and as they moved out the old and brought in the new person, they audited their accounts and found that we hadn't paid the bill for a couple of years that we knew we owed, and asked them to send us a bill so that we could pay them. Well, we've held the money, we've got the money there, the bill is now due, but for us to do it, we have to move it in the accounts and do the budget amendments that Dave's got in the packet there to pull the money back out to pay the bill like should have been paid monthly as we were going forward. I want to commend Trey and his staff and Dave and his staff, because they have been on it.
Two years.
For two years, trying to get them to simply give us a bill, so we can give them some money, because we didn't know how much to give them, and it took them two years to get to that point, but here we are. So that's a, sort of a shorthand, Dave, I don't know if we need to add anything else to that.
Need a motion to approve.
I do.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, seconded by Commissioner Tobin.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimous.
That brings us to item seven on the agenda, and that's Avon Village Beach Nurishment Project Consulting Engineer Contract. At the last meeting, we selected CSE, Coastal Science and Engineering, as our consultant for that project. In your packet is the contract that they sent to us. Staff has reviewed that, we're prepared to move forward, but it needs your approval to do that. It is under the budgeted amount, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I saw the $166,000 estimated contract, and we had budgeted, I thought it was something like that.
We budgeted $250,000.
$250,000.
Yeah. I thought it was in the neighborhood, but something under budget's unique.
Move to approve? Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the, the Avon Beach Nurishment Project Consulting Engineering Contract. Is there a second?
Authorized by County Manager.
And also to authorize the County Manager to sign it. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item eight is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the amendments as the first thing. There's a change on page eight of 11 in Commissioner House's remarks. We've used the word, he said, "Over 35 years of emergency services." We had written in the minutes, "Merchant services." We need to change the word merchant to emergency. With that correction, then we have the statewide mutual aid agreement, the Water Department Budget Amendment, the RE, the EOC Audio Visual System Agreement, audit contract for fiscal year 2020, four-year computer lease with the Sheriff's Office, the McGuire Woods Consulting Lobby Agreement, and the Tax Collector's Report.
Bobby, I got a question on item eight of the consent agenda, and I'm not sure, Becky's not here, that, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it or not.
Let me get to it.
We refunded $151,193 in real estate and personal property, and each one of the reasons were overpayment. Two of them substantial, $43,000 and $25,000, those are, I'm, I'm just curious, who, who overpays that much? I'm just curious.
I don't know the answer to that specific question. I can find out for you. I can tell you that there are some overpayments are, are a result of property tax appeal, where they paid in and we have to refund money. Some of them can be substantial. The belows one is an example of one that would have been a substantial.
Right.
Amount that would have been refunded. There are other reasons. There's errors, there's clerical errors on our part, clerical errors on their part.
escrows.
I'm sorry.
Escrows.
Escrows. Yeah, both of these large, a large one's LLCs, so I'm assuming.
The escrow company can send it in wrong. I mean, there's lots of reasons you can have a property burned down in mid-year. I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking out loud, but I don't know escrows.
Do we get to collect an interest on that?
If you're interested in those two, I'll, I'll find out and let you know.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, that, those are substantial, and a hundred fifty-some thousand dollars is a lot of money, so. At any, I just, a curiosity on my part.
Certainly not none of us.
That's right.
That's right.
So, thank you, County Manager. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
With, with the changes to the minutes.
Okay. That's by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item nine. That's Commissioners' business and Managers' and Attorneys' business. Commissioner House, would you mind kicking that off this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, starting tomorrow, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, is the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission Meeting, that's down in Beaufort. Quite a few things are going on in that meeting. One of them, they plan on voting for the final adoption of the Blue Crab Amendment Three, and also the goals and objection, objectives of the Southern Flounder Fishery Management Plan Amendment Three, and also to vote on FMP goal and objectives of the Shrimp Fisheries Management Plan Amendment Two. I am planning on being at that meeting, and they are aware of our resolutions that we have sent to them prior on all three of those, and plan to be down there and discuss these issues in, in further depth. Hopefully, the weather will hold out and won't be too bad of a ordeal. So just kind of want to keep you abreast of that, and of course, then after... So just kind of want to keep you abreast of that, and of course, then after, a couple of weeks after this meeting, we'll be holding a Dare County Commission for Working Watermen meeting to discuss the situations that went on in this meeting coming up. I am also a big car buff, as most of you know, and I've been a NASCAR fan since I've been way little boy. And our day in history, this is the day that we lost the late, great Dale Earnhardt nine years ago. And in watching the Daytona 500 after rain delays, we watched it on Monday, Ryan Newman, who has been in NASCAR for quite some time, had a horrific accident on the final lap to the fact that it reminded everybody of Dale's death. And I am happy to report, Ryan Newman is still with us. His injuries are very severe, but not life-threatening. So our prayers go out to Ryan Newman, and also the Roush Racing family, and hopefully we'll get him back on the track. In a lighter side to everything, we have our pet of the week, which is truly special. She's resilient, strong, and she would be a great addition to anyone's family. This sweet nurtured six-year-old has lived a full life, and she is looking for her forever home. You'll also see in the video, our pet of the week, Gracie, has three legs, but that doesn't make her harder to care for, and certainly any less lovable.
Our pet of the week for this week is Gracie. Gracie is our darling, three-legged sweetheart. She was surrendered to the shelter with an infected wound on her leg that was so bad the vet needed to amputate. Gracie has recovered like a champ and is ready for her forever home. This girl has seen a lot in her six years and can't wait to find comfort with a loving family. To adopt Gracie or foster one of our other animals, you can come and visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Manio. Join us this weekend on Saturday, February 22nd, at Shipwreck's Tap House and Grill in Kitty Hawk. From 2:30 to 5:30, we'll be there with very adoptable dogs to celebrate National Spay and Neuter Awareness Month. Grab a bite or grab a pint, and hang out to support our shelter animals. For more information, visit our website at www.obxspca.org, or visit our OBXSPCA Facebook page.
So if you want a special little puppy, that's the one for you. She is outstanding, very energetic, and takes that amputated leg in style. She is definitely a most lovable thing. Also, let the dogs out, which will be presented by the EOC, SPCA, is one of their things, and it's at Wolfstock at Elizabeth Gardens, April 18th, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Bring your local furloughers out there to check out the flowers and the gardens, and there you go. And since it is Wolfstock, if you have a tie-dye scar, please put your dog in that and bring it on out. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I saw that video, that accident. Man, that was, that was-
That was-
Quite an accident.
Amazing.
That was incredible. He survived such a-
Yeah, there's no way anybody lives through that.
It's unbelievable.
And he did.
It's unbelievable.
Goes to the, a lot of the safety features that are in those cars, and a lot of the safety features that are in that helped Ryan Newman in that particular accident are because of Dale Earnhardt's accident 10 years ago.
He needed every one of them. He did that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On February 4th, 5th, and 6th, Luca Kinerd and his mother Kelly Kinerd came here for the Escape vape presentations that were held at Hatteras Secondary School, First Flight Middle School, and Manio Middle School. These events were well-attended. Luca Kinerd is a 16-year-old young man who became addicted to nicotine through vaping and speaks very openly about it. He is able, I guess due to his age, to engage really, really super well with the other kids that were in the audience. A lot of great, great questions were asked by the kids and by their parents, which is exactly what we were hoping for, and I think it was a very successful deal. He met, all of those were done at about 6:00 o'clock at night, and during the day, he traveled to Camden County, Pastank County, and the other surrounding counties to give presentations at the schools there. So made very good use of their time, enlightening people to the dangers of vaping, particularly for the youth in the counties. So we want to thank them, thank them for that. On Tuesday, February 11th, Roxanna Ballinger, Bonnie Bennett, and I, for the Saving Lives Task Force, had a faith-based meeting up in Kitty Hawk with the Catholic community. They welcomed us, listened to what we had to say, and as part of our outreach to faith-based communities, to engage with us in the Saving Lives Task Force and become active. And we had a very good meeting there, and at Holy Redeemer Church, and we hope to engage them further as we move forward with the work that the Saving Lives Task Force is doing. On Friday, February 13th, Commissioner Ross and I attended Mann's Harbor Fire Department Awards Dinner, and I'm sure Commissioner Ross will speak to that later. What a great time that was. It was super. It was held right there at the Community Center next to the firehouse, which included a tour of the, where they keep the fire trucks. Got a really good conversation with the young man there, and it's interesting to watch how the, that fire station is kind of going through a changeover to the younger crowd, and they're, those young men are really engaged in studying and doing the best they can, making themselves the best they can be in terms of fighting fire and emergency services. So we're really, really appreciative of them, and thank you for the, to the ladies for the great food that they provided. I can tell you, if you weren't there, you missed a good one.
I'm going back this Friday.
You're going back this Friday?
Yeah.
They do that every Friday, then?
I think so.
That's a pretty good deal. Commissioner Ross and I also attended, on earlier that day, the open house at the Kill Devil Hills Library for their 30 years of service. And if you think about that a minute, that's a long time, but they've been, they've been providing library services for over 30 years there now, and we're certainly appreciative of that. They had, Rob told me they had some very good cake. I didn't, that's not on my list, but it looked like it was really good.
Delicious.
Very, very, very nice. In response to and to clarify the statement that was made here tonight in public comment, it stated erroneously that what we passed at our last meeting was a quote, "Sanctuary County Resolution," unquote. It was- The resolution was in support of the entire- Constitution of the United States of America, and nowhere any sanctuary to be found. Did state, quote, "All amendments therein," unquote. And the resolution was in support of the entire Constitution and all amendments therein. We can go through this with every amendment in the Bill of Rights, if that is the desire of the Board, but I do feel it would be redundant. Sorry, I must have had my hand on-
He had his hand on his mic.
Sorry. But I do feel that it would be redundant. As stated during discussion of the resolution, I believe all the amendments in the Bill of Rights exist co-equally and vital to the rights of the people as the founders who wrote them intended, and that is why the resolution was in support of the Constitution in toto. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Appreciate that. I had the opportunity to attend that middle school presentation by that young man on the vape, and I just want to commend the Savings Lives Task Force for doing that. I know you were in Hatteras, and you were on the Northern Beaches and on the island here, and he mesmerized the group, and those kids that were there really had some great questions, and so I commend you and the Savings Lives Task Force for doing that. It was very, very informative. Nobody wanted to get up and leave. I mean, they could have stayed there all night, so thank you for doing that. Commissioner Bateman?
I have nothing to share tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Couch?
I want to thank the Board for coming down to Hatteras. I know we had a meeting right after that heard, right after we had that meeting. I've heard a lot of good things about the proactive reach-out that has been going on down there. You know, with all the data that we get relative to the county, the management of county business, I mean, it's 108 miles from Duck to Hatteras, but we reach out and cover all areas, and I want to just thank this Board for making, make an extension of time and effort. It's a drive down there. We are elected to these positions, but it doesn't go unnoticed, and being, that is my district, and I represent that constituency, I'm grateful for every person on this Board and making that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I got. Enjoy it while I don't have a whole lot to say. For the change.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for missing the last meeting, but it was our last trade show of the year, and it's one we can't miss. We do that trade show every other year, so I know you guys had a full agenda on that meeting, and I'd like to go on the record as being in complete 100% support of the resolution that was passed.
Thank you.
Also, this past week, I went to the Dare County Older Adult Services Board meeting and met our new employee, Amy Hakola, that is down at the Pheasant Inn Center, and she is full of energy, has a lot of great ideas for the center down there. It's really a breath of fresh air, and luckily for the people of Hatteras, she is a trained chef, and she is orchestrating and cooking meals for the community down there through the Pheasant Inn Center, so get ready to put on some pounds. Also, we heard about what was going on at the Bomb Center, and I encouraged the Bomb Center to try to coordinate a little bit more with Spring Arbor and getting some of the Spring Arbor residents involved with all the activities that go on at the Bomb Center. There's a lot of activities that go on there. Being in such close proximity and having a population at Spring Arbor that can participate, it's a kind of a no-brainer. So hopefully, that's going to happen. Also, I received notice from Cooperative Extension Service that Shannon Brooks, who is the Director, has tendered her resignation. It's a happy-sad moment for me. Shannon is a very good Director down there, but she's advancing her career and taking a position in the College Ag Life Sciences at NC State. Go Wolfpack! So I'm happy for her on that.
You had to throw that in there.
He did. He had, he just had to throw that in.
Had to do it, sorry. Also, we had a task force meeting, and the, on the, I believe it was the 11th, don't hold me to that date, but the RFPs were issued to 14 shipyards, and they had basically a week to reply whether they were going to accept doing a proposal or deny. Five shipyards denied the process. Nine shipyards are working on proposals. They have a four-week deadline to submit the proposals, and already several of them have asked for a two-week extension, which we knew going in that was probably going to happen, but we wanted to expedite the process as quickly as possible. Other than that, all I have to say is Steve House and I voted today, and I encourage everybody to get out and vote. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did the dredge come back to Oregon Inlet?
Yes, the merit is at Oregon Inlet right now.
And they are going to honor their commitment to go back to Hatteras?
Yes.
Great. How long will they be in Oregon Inlet? Do you know?
Yeah, I do. Give me a minute, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, no problem. I was just curious, so I'm just glad to know that they're going to honor going back to Hatteras. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, Vice Chairman Overman, thank you for that clarification and correction of statement of fact during public comment. I appreciate that, and that clarifies that. Number two, yes, the Mann's Harbor Appreciation Dinner, what we were invited to was an amazing event, amazing event. The Ladies or Women's Club of Mann's Harbor recognizes and appreciates the volunteer fire department once a year, and if you want a snapshot of a community that we can all be proud of, that I confess, I did not know much about the folks at Mann's Harbor, they're tops, top of the list, absolutely. Secondly, yes, it was a delicious cake at the library celebration in Kill Devil Hills. Sorry you missed out, Mr. Vice Chairman. On Thursday of this week, the Outer Banks Community Foundation is hosting its annual luncheon and awards ceremony at Jeanette's Pier at noon. On March 2nd, we will have the UNC School of Government folks here for a site visit. That's March 2nd, with regard to developing essential housing in the county. On the 25th of this month, I will be participating with our Tourism Board Event Site Task Force, where we are looking at and evaluating strategies for the Soundside Event Site in Nagshead, and with the recent acquisition of the Dairy Queen property and the Pamela O'Jacks property, strategic views on how that can be maximized for the most potential benefit to the county with regard to attracting events and additional tourism activities. And finally, the Albemarle Commission is in the midst of its search for a new Executive Director. We've got a week left in the open period for soliciting applications and letters of interest, so as that proceeds, we have Bob Murphy, who is serving as temporary Executive Director. He did so about a year and a half ago, did a fine job, so I'll keep you posted on the Albemarle Commission as it goes forward. And I just thought I would add, it struck me as we were going through the tax revaluation data, the entire county, every property in Dare County was assessed, and the value was $16 billion. Just pause for a minute. When you listen to the news and all, we have a candidate running for President who could write a check tomorrow and buy every property in Dare County and still have three-quarters of his bank balance left over. That just struck me as a really noteworthy statistic. That guy's really wealthy. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Mr. Chair, I have an answer for you.
Thank you, sir.
They were supposed to show up February 21st and work through the 14th. So-
Good deal. Thank you. I mean, I know that's critical of me.
Adjust that time period to when they showed up and when they'll be gone, and-
Thank you.
And that's always written in jello.
Yeah, well, and I know, and I appreciate it. I know you and I had a personal conversation, and I know you do all you can to make sure they get back to Hatteras.
Yep.
So, thank you. Brings us to County Manager.
Yes, sir, I have one thing. The Village of Hatteras and NC 12, they're doing a bikeway project or a sidewalk project through there, and the engineers came to me on Friday, and I got a map yesterday. They're in front of the Hatteras Medical Center as you come off the bridge coming into Hatteras Village. Everywhere else, they're putting the bike path on the DOT side of the line between the property owner and the right-of-way line. They need to jog that in. They need to do it in there to get around the drainage system, to maintain some of the parking that's down there, and get a little bit more separation from traffic. So they're asking us, can they put it on our sideline? So the easement's about 15 feet wide, and it would be from the DOT right-of-way, 15 feet or so into the Hatteras Village Medical Center property. Not quite the height. It loops in, and the part of it goes across and loops back, so it wouldn't be the whole way, but almost the whole way across that property. They've asked me if I would send a letter to them stating we would approve that, so they can go forward with their permit, and they need that letter, and then down the road, if they got, as they get the funding and constructed, they'd be coming back to us for an easement to actually use that property for the sidewalk. I don't see any issues with that. It's not an area that we use, but again, before we authorize the use of- But again, before we authorize the use of county property like that, you all would have to approve it.
Yeah, that was my question. Do you, do you see any, any issue?
I know, and I've, I've looked at the map. I'm glad to share it with you, but there's nothing.
Okay. Pleasure, the board?
I'm good.
There's a motion to move forward. Commissioner Bateman has been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carries you now.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. County Manager. I just promoted you.
Betty don't want it.
I know.
I know Dagon Wellie don't want it. I can promise you that.
Mrs. Hester, how are you this evening?
Very well, thank you.
Sitting there patiently, waiting for us to finish? Anything on your agenda this evening?
Couple of things. You and the Vice Chairman mentioned the Escape vape
Right.
session. I was not able to attend that, but we did videotape that one of the evenings, I think, at First Flight. And it, and it is available. I did watch the video, and it's, it's wonderful. And I would encourage parents, anyone, just to learn about the way that this young man was able to overcome his addiction. You can go to currenttv.org and watch that on demand. And tomorrow, I'll put that, that link on our homepage as well, because it was a reminder that we should make that a little easier to access. Because it was
One sixty-one or one sixty-nine on?
It's showing, I think, at four p.m. and ten p.m. on one ninety-one, which is the government channel. But you can get it on demand on that Current TV website. You don't, just whenever you have time to watch.
Yeah.
And I'll just say, the Complete Count Committee that you all established with myself and Donna Creve as co-chairs, we are in full swing, and we have an active committee. Donna and I plan to come and present to you all with an update at your next meeting. We'll make a request to get on the agenda, but we've been out and about, and we'll, we'll fill you in when we come back. But it's, I left a postcard at your, at your desk. The one thing, I talked to our partnership specialist, the gentleman who covers about eight or nine counties. There are a lot of part-time census jobs available, particularly in Dare County. So anyone listening, if you know anybody that might like a part-time job, that they do need people to, to help. There's going to be a lot of, when the invitations or the notices get mailed, anyone who uses a P.O. box does not receive that via mail. It gets delivered to their home. So I know that there are a lot of people in this county who use P.O. boxes. And so I think the number of folks that they need to assist is pretty high in this county. So I just encourage anyone who might have time and availability to, to check that out.
Super. How are these getting out, Dorothy?
In lots of different ways. They're going to be in the libraries, they're going to be in town halls. They're, I mean, we're, we just got those printed, and they're, we're actually, they're in Spanish as well. One of the places I'm going tomorrow is to the Children and Youth Partnership, because one of the hardest-to-reach segments of the community are the Latinos, the Spanish-speaking. And in many cases, the children in those families speak for the adults and communicate for the adults. So there are tutors, there's a tutoring program through Children and Youth Partnership where these volunteers go in to the families, the Spanish-speaking families. And we're going to be distributing through the tutors. So you're going to start seeing a lot of newsletters. The towns are promoting the census in their newsletters. I saw it was in the Chambers newsletter today. We, Donna and I, and Beth spoke Monday to the teachers. They had an enrichment series at First Flight High School yesterday. And we were there and spoke to a number of teachers about implementing some of the statistics in schools curriculum in the classroom. So we have gone all out. If we don't reach that eighty-two percent threshold that the governor has asked for, I won't believe it, because we have really, and, and our committee members as well have worked hard to, to spread the word.
No, I know you have, and y'all very, worked very, very hard to do that, and thank you.
We'll have a float in the
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask you, is everybody ready for a parade?
Oh, yeah.
Fill us in, Dorothy. We're going to have a, we're going, we're going to have a cake on the float.
I wanted to be a surprise.
Okay, all right, okay.
So
Well, I just, I just
But we're going to celebrate the hundred and fiftyth anniversary, yes.
Need a budget amendment?
Nope. We're going, we're going to keep it inexpensive, but we're going to make a splash.
Good deal.
We have
Thank you for working on that.
Yes, sir.
Excited to see that happen and have some fun at the St. Patty's Parade. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, how are you this evening? Are you, I know you, I know you let the County Manager handle that one item. I thought you were going to handle that, but
He volunteered.
Okay. I got you.
The, just one thing, the, the tax refund, the largest one you were asking for, I just found it. It's a twenty-four-bedroom oceanfront home in Kill Devil Hills, and it was paid twice, both last year and this year.
Yeah, it's a shame they found that. I'm just kidding. Both of them were LLCs, so I was curious, just curious. That brings us to time to adjourn until March the second. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting until March the second?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobin, and it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
I sat with Jack the other day, so I was channeling him.
Who's in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? Pose likewise? Motion carries you now.